Thank you for watching. We are having the Sanford School Committee regular meeting. City Council Chambers, Third Floor, City Hall Annex. I will call this meeting to order at 6:01. All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. I'm just gonna state our mission statement of why we're all here. The mission of the Sanford School Department is to prepare all students with future-ready skills and knowledge to empower success in a rapidly changing world. I don't believe we have any adjustments moving on. And next, we have approval of minutes. So we have Monday, November 17th, 2025, which is a workshop. Monday, November 17th, which is a regular meeting at 6:00. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I second that.
Perfect. All in favor? All right, wonderful. I don't believe we have anybody on Zoom for public comment, and I don't believe we have anyone here other than speakers. Perfect. And communications. Mr. Nelson, we have some communications that you wanted to discuss.
Yes, two. On November 13th, received a letter from David Hartley, the child nutrition consultant for the Maine Department of Education. In that communication, in that letter, he let us know that our cash balance exceeded the three months' average operating cost for that, and there's federal regulations stating that the cash balance shall not exceed total expenses for three months. And so they've asked us to make sure that we have a written plan, which is required by December 13th, for us to ensure that we'll be in compliance with this federal regulation. One of the things that's holding us up was we were planning on utilizing, we still are, but we're planning on utilizing funds for, to build a storage facility for our school nutrition program at, over, behind Sanford Middle School. And we had a site that we were originally looking at after calling a meeting with city officials and codes. We have then changed the location of that. And so I was speaking with Jason Dudley, our Directors of Facility Maintenance, and right now, we're waiting on getting approval from, for what we've submitted in terms of that new location. And once we do that, we'll be able to move forward, and that's where the funds will be able to come back and spend. It's more of a question of just, our timing got thrown off by changing that location and doing that. So, we did receive that letter. We're on it. We'll have our plan to, back to the DOE by December 13th. And then, the other correspondence we received was some bad news recently regarding our grant, our application to the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, also known as COPS Office. This is, we have in the past requested funding through the School Violence Prevention Program, and we've done that again this year. Unfortunately, we found out that, that they regret to inform us that our application was not among those that were selected for funding for that. So, that's disappointing. As I said, this was something, a grant that we have been received in the past. It's a big part of our technology department. For many years, we've leveraged this grant in terms of also through our technology budget to make sure that we are maximizing all the resources. A lot of this grant has been used for cameras, school cameras around our campus and around our facilities to be able to do that. So, unfortunate that we received this news, but we'll be working with our Technology Director, Lisa Joyner, on how we can be able to then have to look at her budget in terms of any changes we have to make and priorities that we have to do. So those are the two communications that we've received.
Perfect. And I did receive two emails from Betty, Jean Charette, as well. So thank you, Betty.
Just to, what, do we have a rough idea of what the, what would the grant kind of give us before? What are we, what are we looking at as far as potential budget?
Cheryl, do you know the funding for the COPS grant in terms of what that amount usually has been? Two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand of what we've received in the past with that. So it is, it is significant and a hit for that.
All right, moving on to committee reports.
Sure. So Policy Committee, you'll see the Policy Committee met last Monday, November 24th, and you'll see policies in this evening's, later on this evening's agenda as a follow-up from that meeting. Sanford Regional Technical Center Advisory Committee met on Friday, November 14th. One of the items that they had talked about at that meeting was, they have a proposal that they would like student stalls, for graduation stalls, to be added for Sanford Regional Technical Center. And so, a student, one of SRTC students came in to be able to make a presentation to the Advisory Committee for that. So there is interest in stalls from that. I think there's also, I think everyone is in agreement that there should be something for recognition of Sanford Regional Technical Center. The question is, is it a stall or is it gonna be something else? So, prior to the next school committee meeting, I'll be providing some information to the school committee, just, and also talking with people at Sanford High School, so that we can get some guidance in terms of being able, because if it is something that is approved, they need lead time to be able to purchase that for all the sending schools to where the, have those SRTC students wear those stalls at graduation, which would happen in the spring with that. So, that was, we had that. Director Matt Peterman also gave numbers, updated enrollments for the schools and the programs. We also have the Cooperative Agreement amongst all the sending schools that needs to be updated every year, so we took action on that. We've also started work on our regional calendar, also providing any updates on that piece. Matt Peterman also gave an update on some new programming as far as, I think, looking to expand the career exploratory programs to also include some satellite programs at our sending schools in terms of that. And then, we're also getting ready for budget. And so the next meeting for the SRTC Advisory Committee is December 12th with that. And then, Sanford Performing Arts Advisory Committee had a meeting last Wednesday, November 19th. At that meeting, the committee was able to be introduced to Blaine Moran, who is the Assistant Program Director for Sanford Performing Arts Center. Brett Williams, the director, also gave us a budget snapshot in terms of where things stood financially. Things are in really good shape in terms of the enterprise account. Also, looking at some sound upgrades. There was something there, there'll be some sound upgrades that Sanford High School, Sanford Performing Arts Center will be getting from, the Janes Foundation made a donation, and by doing that, that will allow us to share the, or give the current Performing Arts Center sound to the middle school for them to be able to also upgrade their sound in doing that. So that's good news. Brett gave us some recaps on the events. It's already been a busy time down at Sanford Performing Arts Center. And even since that meeting, they've also had a couple other performances as far as the series, the Spotlight Series, in doing that. And then Brett is also looking at the idea of trying to expand any community partnerships that may be able, especially with Blaine Moran coming on board, that might be able to allow him to come back and do that. And the next meeting for Performing Arts Center is Wednesday, December 17th.
Okay, perfect. Moving on to Superintendent's Report.
Sure. We'll start off with the Sanford Spotlight. I'll try to help Zach out here. He's running solo tonight, so he and I will tag-team this a little bit, but Zach, kick it off.
Sure thing. Sanford Schools unite to feed families for Thanksgiving. Sanford Schools came together in a district-wide effort that put holiday meals on tables of dozens of local families. From spirited students competitions to generous community partnerships, this initiative exemplifies the spirit of giving that, the giving that defines both the seasons and the Sanford community. Some sites around our school. At RJ Lamb, for their Unit 1 writing celebrations, third graders picked a main character from the classic tale, "The Wind in the Willows," and provided evidence as to why they display a certain character trait. At Margaret Chase Smith, pre-k for Maine students wrapped up Unit 2 with a joyful learning celebrations alongside their families. Children proudly shared their work, demonstrated new skills, and guided their grown-ups throughout hands-on activities from the unit. Sanford Middle School, Sanford Middle School hosted a successful bingo night filled with prizes, prize winners, and plenty of laughs. At Sanford Pride Elementary, Sanford Pride Elementary's BTA hosted a Rise, Shine, and Drive-Thru Coffee Time fundraiser. Families ordered hot coffee, iced coffee, and some other stuff. Yeah, sounds pretty fun. Sanford Fall Athletes earned state, regional, and conference honors. Sanford High School Fall Athletes earned recognitions at conference, state, and regional levels this season. And down below are some of the athletes that were awarded. Spartan Times Article of the Week, so, the Spartan Times is a online, SHS online student newspaper that is written by students who are enrolled in CCP Journalism or School Newspaper Enrichment courses. Below is an article written by Aiden Coe on winter athletics, sharing their goals for the upcoming season. SRTC Program Highlight Engineering Technologies. This is a part of the series highlighting the career and technical education programs offered at Sanford Regional Technical Center. There is no single right answer in engineering, and that's exactly what makes SRTC Engineering Technology Program so exciting. Well, Sanford Adult Education partnered with Maine Health for Career Training. Students that are interested in healthcare careers will soon have a chance to explore five different pathways, learn from working professionals, and earn an AMA interview at Maine Health all within three months at no cost.
Thank you, Zach. Nice job. Continuing on in the Spotlight, we were, John T. Gorman Foundation has been a big supporter in the Sanford School Department with that, really helped us in terms of really working towards addressing student homelessness. And so, we were recently featured on their, for our work on their website. They had a press release with that, so we wanted to highlight that into the Spotlight. Also, part of this week's, this edition is Curriculum Corner. We have a newsletter from our Curriculum Director, Bethany Lambert, which is also part of this newsletter. We also included the article in there of inclement weather protocols, which I think is probably pretty timely right now when you look at what the weather forecast is. So this will be able to look forward to what's gonna happen in terms of when we have inclement. There is a winter storm warning that is aware. Right now, it looks like that snow, last forecast that I had, was not gonna be starting until tomorrow morning. So with that being the case, we will get up early in the morning, we'll check with our forecast just to make sure the forecast hasn't changed. And if it does probably hold true, then I think there's probably a real good chance that we will not be in school tomorrow. But considering that the snow is not scheduled to come back till after nine, we'll wanna make sure that that forecast doesn't change for that. So I think everyone can probably be expecting communication tomorrow morning. As always, if you are not signed up, to be able to receive our alerts, that's always a great reason to sign up to be able to hear those for. And then, also, as part of our Spotlight, we always wanna talk about attendance, attendance, especially during the holiday season, as it does get into the fall and winter season, it starts getting darker earlier, that we do have some, a campaign there for attendance. Also, including our work in there on the See Something, Say Something efforts that we have through the Sandy Hook Promise with that, which allows people to submit anonymous safety concerns anytime, from anywhere with that. We wanna continue to make people aware of that. People can also stay connected with the Sanford School Department. You have, you can download our app. There's also ways to follow our athletic programs, athletic teams, and also a way to watch some of the home games as well. And I think Zach will be talking a little bit more about that in his update. And then, as always, we have some additional links to stay updated with the community. So, once again, another, another packed Spotlight for things happening in the Sanford School Department. Okay, next up in this is, I did wanna give a branding update. School Committee did have a workshop recently to go over some branding for our new updated mission, our updated vision, our updated core principles and beliefs on learning, and our update on the Portrait of a Future-Ready Graduate. So, we've worked through our digital design program at Sanford Regional Technical Center, kinda gave them a competition. I was kind of the, representing the school department as the client, and so we had a number of submissions that the school committees worked through. We zeroed down on one. And so, right now, we met with that student in a workshop recently, and that information, feedback will be coming back in that, he's taken that final feedback, and so I'll be able to share that with the school committee. Our hope is that that will be something that we could probably formally take action on, on our next regular school committee business meeting to do that. So that's coming along nicely. Looking forward to that in terms of the nice work that has been done there. And then, also, for the, I wanted to point out that the, the Learning from Maine series that is been released, we were able to see that, I say "we," the school committee members, at the conference, it was featured at the Maine School Management Annual Fall Conference. They highlighted that with it. And what the Learning from Maine documentary series, it's a collaborative initiative led by the Maine School Boards Association, the Maine School Superintendent's Association, and other educational organizations. And they recently premiered Learning from Maine. It's a documentary, documentary video series on Maine Public Television. The series highlights innovative education practices across the state, featuring stories from Limestone, Farmington, Portland, and Bethel to date. The episodes explore educational approaches, including a reimagined ninth-grade experience in Bethel where students learn in the woods for an entire year, an apprenticeship model in Farmington connecting students with real-world career experiences. The, it's hosted by former Maine Principal Derek Pierce. There are 10 to 15-minute segments that showcase promising practices that strengthen Maine Public Schools and communities. Maine Public Television recently partnered with them to produce eight additional episodes to be broadcast in 2026. So I just wanted to bring this to people's attention. Our Communications Corps, Sam Bonzey's putting a story together that we're pushing that out. I think he was even gonna be pushed out today, if not day tomorrow, which would include links to these different stories that are going on with that. And I think it's worth promoting and worth sharing with people to show some of the neat things that are happening throughout our state in doing that. And so, that's an update there on the Learning from Maine series, and that's the Superintendent's Report for this evening.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right, moving on to Director's Report. We will ask Athletic Director Zach Lemlin to come on up and give us a recap on the fall sports and a preview of the winter sports. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you guys for having me. Suppose I should turn that on so people can hear me online. My kids, probably.
Yeah.
They are sitting up watching. So, thank you guys for having me. Super excited about, obviously, the wrap-up of fall sports, the start of winter. Had a pretty successful fall season. Really looking forward to a great winter season. As we get started and we get into the first couple of stuff, there's just kind of our recognition of our fall teams. I think the first one up there was our cross-country team. They finished fourth in the region on our boys team, seventh in the states. We had our first girls team score, which was awesome. So it shows that Coach Smith and Coach Stroud are doing a terrific job of getting girls specifically to be involved. But the program as a whole is doing a great job. We've got a lot of connection with the, with the middle school, and hopefully that continues there. Earned the Sportsmanship Award for the second year in a row, and had a New England qualifier for the first time in a really long time. So really excited about what happened there. Our field hockey team had an outstanding season, really frustrating loss at Bitterford, but excited about the group that we had and the core that'll come back next year. And as well, Coach Kane and Coach Smith was, were the boys' coaches recognized by the ESMA, the league we play in. So I was really excited for the two of them and those programs. Our girls soccer team lost in the corner finals to Wyndham, and volleyball was recognized with the Sportsmanship Award. So we had a pretty successful fall at Sanford High School. The middle school was successful as well. I think, if I were to think back, we only lost one game this fall to rain, so middle school soccer was able to play nearly a full season along with field hockey and cross-country. So, it was good for those guys and happy for the middle school to hopefully get that experience and get ready to come up. The accolades, we had 47 student athletes earn All Academic, which I was really proud of, that that continues to increase each year. Really happy for any student who can continue to maintain a 92.5 or higher. You know, that's definitely impressive and wanna recognize those kids. We had 18 all-conference student athletes, three all-state student athletes, and two all-New England field hockey players. We had a really successful year for individual awards and as well as team awards. We had our Fall Awards Night last, or not last week, but two weeks ago, on the 13th, which was incredibly well-attended and really happy with the amount of parents and students who came out to support and kinda finished the fall sports on a high note. As we kinda had the fall season, you know, I do wanna give a thank you to Jason Dudley, Lester, Tony, and Skip for the work they did for our Facilities and Maintenance Department. I don't know how, but they made the fields look amazing despite it being as dry, you know, as they did. And Parks and Rec did a fantastic job with keeping up on not just the high school fields, but the middle school fields as well. So, so they did an awesome job, and a huge kudos to them. As we get ready to start our winter season here, we, our numbers are very healthy as a whole. We're up about 10 kids, and there seems to always be a few stragglers every day that come knocking on the door of the athletic department. And we're certainly adding more people to, to the teams if they're still there specifically for track, but our numbers are looking good. 15 student athletes on our cheer team, 38 in boys' basketball for three teams, 22 for our girls' basketball team for varsity and JV, 60 student athletes right now on track. We've seen a ton of growth in the girl side of that, which is really cool. Ice hockey, for the first time, that's even getting a little bit bigger. We have our first female ice hockey player joining the Bitterford TA, Kenny Bonk, you name them, they're there. So it's exciting to see somewhat a part of that. Our swim numbers have continued to get a little bit bigger, and so I hope for, that, that season's gonna start two weeks later due to pool availability and state championships. So, they actually started swimming today. Wrestling, we have 26 student athletes, and Unified Basketball will begin after the new year. So, very excited about what's happening at the high schools. We've got full gyms, full teams, and a lot of noise, which is always pretty good. At the middle school, they started on the same day, on November 17th, and we're gonna be able to offer two boys' basketball teams, two girls' basketball teams, and a cheerleading team that's gonna compete a couple of times this winter. So, things are looking good there. I know middle school basketball started their opening games tonight, so I'm sure it was a little bit of chaos down there, but all in good fun. Winter 2 will start for the middle school on Thursday, February 5th, and that'll be wrestling and volleyball for that season. So it will be a quick turnaround from Winter 1 into Winter 2, but we have some really good opportunities for kids to still continue to be involved before spring sports start. Looking forward to a busy winter. Always great to have positive support from our faculty, students, parents, as we're gonna get started this Friday night with Boys and Girls Basketball gets kicked off. We have wrestling the following week, and then cheer will be a little bit later. But some of the upcoming events that we'll have, we were originally supposed to have our ESMA Leadership Summit tomorrow, but I think something might get in the way of that, so we've moved that out, you know. And the biggest person I was worried about for that one was SRTC. They are catering the event for us. They are incredible. They are gonna cater pizza, salad, subs for 200 people. Chef is awesome with that, and he was stressing out a little bit this morning as we were making the decision. He's like, "I've got a lot of dough to prep." Like, what are we doing? So he was amazing, and they're gonna be able to push that to next week for us. Starting the new year, we'll have our wrestling tournament again, so we're excited for that. We're gonna have 23 teams come up. It'll be a long weekend of some pretty high-quality wrestling, so if anybody's around, come on down and check it out. Excited to have the Class A Regional, excuse me, the Regional Cheering Competition on the 31st. That'll be a really fun weekend for all the teams to come down and compete at Sanford High School. Be a good chance for us to show off our new cheer mat and have a full gym and kinda rotate around there. And then, we were fortunate that we were originally supposed to host the Regional Wrestling Tournament, and I did a little bit of trading and jockeying around, and we ended up with the New England qualifier. So that'll be at the end of February vacation. That'll be a fun tournament to have. We haven't had that in Sanford, I don't think, in a long time, if maybe ever. So it'd be cool to see how that goes for us. That'll be the last opportunity for kids to wrestle until they go to New England's the following week in March. So that, that becomes a pretty good one. Should be some awesome wrestling that day. That's kinda it for the upcoming stuff for us, and pretty proud to share that we just held our second induction ceremony for the class of 2025 for the Sanford Athletics Hall of Honor. We had that this past weekend at the Performing Arts Center, and then went over to the Elks for a reception. We will be accepting nominations for people who are interested in being inducted or having inductees that they feel are worthy. You can reach out to me. All that stuff is online as well. We'll start to promote that as we get a little bit closer to the new year. But certainly, congratulations to Andy Adams, the family of Teddy Gardner, family of Keith Kalman, Kelly LaFountain, and Chrissy Richards. It was a fantastic ceremony. We had a pretty full Performing Arts Center. We had a really full Elks for people to come and socialize and talk about the days of old, and certainly got a good chance to spend time together. So there's our five inductees underneath the sign that's in the Athletics and Performing Arts Centers. Oh, is my time up?
(laughing)
So we, we had a really great ceremony on Saturday and a good reception after. So there's our inductees underneath the board, and we'd invite any of you guys to go and check that out if you haven't seen it yet. And then we had a few pictures of some student athletes from the Fall Leadership Council who were there, helping get people inside, hold doors, pass out programs, get people seated. And then there's just a couple of pictures from what inside the Elks looked like. It was pretty, pretty well-decorated. I'm not gonna take a whole lot of credit for that. I, I'm fortunate, there's some committee members who told me exactly where to go and how to get there and climb the ladder and do exactly what I need to do. So, pretty good at that. I'm not a decorator by any chance. But it was, it was great to see the support for the school, for athletics, for the community. It's really becoming a pretty special day that people are starting to mark their calendars for. So we look forward to doing that each year. And a big thank you to the committee for putting up with, with a lot of hard work and a lot of labor that probably goes unnoticed, but it makes for a pretty fun event. As we go kind of forward... As we go kind of forward into the rest of the stuff here, we are using HuddleFan to livestream all of the events at Sanford High School. You can download the app on your TV. You can download it on your phone. As a league, we're moving towards that, so pretty fortunate that if the girls are playing at South Portland, I can log on to our HuddleFan account and it links right to that one, and I can I can click on the link and watch the South Portland game and be watching something that's going on at Sanford. We have changed to Arbiter Live, so that's where all of our practice schedules are. So if you have a question about that, you can certainly go there. That's on the athletics website as well, and you can see the QR code up there for to be able to download the app, the GoFan app, which is continuing to get updated and getting better at it and figuring out how to use it, and I know all of our game schedules are in there. Practice schedules are slowly getting incorporated in there, trying to become a little more tech-savvy myself as we continue to use Instagram, Facebook, Twitter to be able to push stuff out and try to have as much positive publicity for the athletic department as possible, because it's great to recognize our kids and the hard work that they're having. We're going to continue with our leadership council. We'll have our first one this Wednesday at one-twenty-five. Really happy to partner with Megan Hamilton with Stride Mental Performance. She's going to come back this winter and be involved with leadership goals, conflict resolution, growth mindset, any leadership skills. She's fantastic. The kids really responded well to her this winter, and I think it gave a fresh voice rather than me talking about different things, and she's really able to hunker down with those guys and make that a really positive environment for those leaders from each one of our winter teams. So that's kind of the wrap-up from the athletic department from the fall and the winter, and really excited about where we're going.
I just wanted to say, seeing those forty-seven students up on stage, and they kept moving down, and then they just couldn't fit anymore up there. It was pretty, you know, all academics. That was pretty great to see. It was it was pretty funny. They always kept trucking down, but then it was just, no more could fit. It was pretty good.
Needed to have a bigger PEC at that time.
And having gone to the Hall of Honor, like, thank you, Zach, like, you led it, and it was amazing, and if you haven't been, I strongly encourage you to go. I made my junior stay from the big to the end, and she was really glad she was, because it's just so amazing hearing their stories, like, one in particular I would love for our students to hear, or two of them, but just, you know, like, literally, I think it was David Woodson, that he had to walk sixteen miles to get to practice back in the day because he really wanted to play and really wanted to participate, and I think that having our students hear that, and like, it's like, not just a random, it's like a real person that did have to do that and was successful, so I just, I thought it was awesome, so thank you for that. All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you guys. Have a great night.
All right, we're moving on to David Boger, School Nutrition Director, and I apologize if I just said your last name wrong. All right, I did? All right, good. Food service update. Thanks so much for being here.
I thank you guys for having me. I get really nervous for these, but every time I come and I hear what's going around and what the purpose of this all is, it's all about just doing right by kids and making a difference. It always kind of puts me at ease, and I really kind of actually enjoy this more as I think about it, so thank you for having me. First, I'd just like to start out with some acknowledgements and thank-yous. I had a huge hiring class this year. I had to hire some eight kitchen personnel out of forty-three-plus staff, so it's about twenty percent of my staff. It's been very challenging, but I also want to acknowledge some of the really important people. We've we've elevated some of our folks to different positions, kitchen manager positions. I have a new kitchen manager at Sanford Pride, Katie Spulick, who's doing a great job over there, learning the ropes and bringing a lot of new, great ideas. I have a new kitchen manager at the middle school, Joelle Landry. She's faced a lot of challenges this year, and she's just really rose above them. I'm really impressed with her leadership skills as a new manager. Really pleased. I have two new district managers now. We decided to combine the district manager role into two. We found it was a little bit much for one person to help me oversee all the operating things that go on in food service, so we've split it between Linda Stone and Judy Belanger. Linda Stone is at the high school and the middle school. She concentrates on those age groups, whereas Judy concentrates on the elementary schools, and it's been a great division of labor and really helping us to drill down on the needs of those particular age groups, so kudos to them. I have a new admin assistant. I won't embarrass her, Amy Morin. She came to us from the medical field world, from iCare. She's really brought those skills and her skills of just really being fast and on top of things, and also great new ideas, so I'm really pleased with this addition to our team. But with that, we had to say goodbye to Diane Tapscott, who's a long-serving administrative assistant in my department, and I just want to extend my heartfelt thank-yous to her for all that she's did in our department, and namely, helping us become part of the CEP program, which I'll talk about in just a minute. So we do more than just school lunch and school nutrition, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the other programs that are thriving here in Sanford School Nutrition. Our summer food program is thriving as always. We had some really decent numbers this year. Numbers weren't hugely over the year previous, but they were, they were higher, which is always good. Weather does play a factor into things for us. When it rains, things do affect our numbers. But we did receive some fifteen thousand more in reimbursement this year for the summer food service program, so that's a great addition. I spent a lot of time at these meal sites, going around, talking to people, observing, inspecting, and one of the themes that I get from a lot of the folks and the participants who come to these meal sites, namely, parents who bring their kids, is how important this service is to them. They say, thank you for being here, and this is just such a huge help to my family. And I can't tell you how good that feels when you go to a site like Harper Tier Park, when maybe we're doing fifteen, sixteen, twenty meals a day, not a huge impact, but the impact is real on these people who come up to me and say, wow, thank you so much for being here. You have no idea how much this helps me having this taken care of for my kid every day. So yeah, summer food is great, and we will continue to roll with it. Hopefully, maybe we expand sites. We'll see how things go. Again, another thank you to Linda Stone, Joanne Quaid, Judy Belanger, all their hard work in helping this happen. Joanne Quaid specifically, our transportation person, worked so hard in the summer, driving between every site every day, twice a day, getting those meals to those kids, because all of our meals are unitized meals that we ship out to these sites, so lots of work in the early mornings getting those out and lots of coordination, and every day without fail, she's doing it for the kids, so thank you, Joanne. CACFP after-school program, we do a super snack program, which has been really popular with the kids that are high school. It took me a little while to get it up and running this year. Every year, it's a little bit challenging staffing it. The hours are a little different for some of the normal people I get to apply to my programs, so they're a little bit outside of the normal, we'll say, mom hours, dad hours, who people like these, these school nutrition hours fit right, so they can drop their kid off and pick their kid up. So it's been a little more challenging, but I've found a great person in Rachel Carlson-Jones, who is been from the CACFP world, so she brought her knowledge and has just really hit the ground running, and our first day of operation in mid-October, we did a hundred and five meals, which blew our average right out of the water, and we've continued to do a hundred-plus meals. We've had some ups and downs, but the numbers are really great, and I can see that it really is a need over at the high school, so really happy with the way that that's going, and really hoping to expand the offerings and giving them some things that maybe they haven't seen, and maybe use it as an outlet to test some new menu items, see how it goes on a smaller scale. We really like to focus on really easy grab-and-go meals, things that are fun, but handheld meals, but we don't want to do just the same old pizza and nuggets all the time, so. One other program that we have been doing now for, this is our second year, is our DOD Fresh Program. It wasn't happening before I got here, and this is a great government-funded program where we use a large portion of our government money towards fresh produce. I've allocated about, I think, seventy thousand to that program, and we are just plowing through the money. Last year, we didn't use it all. I started it kind of a little bit late and kind of had a slow start getting the logistics set up. Where's the food going to get delivered? How's it going to get distributed to the schools? And now that we've had the logistics all worked out and all the ordering system down pat with the managers, we've really hit the ground running, and we're really, next year, we're going to have to probably allocate about twice as much, and I think if you go around to the schools, especially the middle school and the high school, you should be seeing a lot of fresh produce on those salad bars, because that's my directive to my managers, fill those salad bars up with all this great fresh produce we're getting from the Department of Defense, and make those salad bars colorful, make them full enough that you could go through that salad bar and build your own full, you know, entree salad if you want. They've been doing a really good job with that. So something I really wanted to talk about, which is kind of a big, one of the biggest kind of changes in school nutrition for us here at Sanford, is becoming part of the community-eligible provision. And now, the reason we were able to become part of this is because of the change in the determination of who qualifies. Now, that was lowered from forty percent to twenty-five percent, and with this provision, it's, I won't go too much into the weeds, but the community-eligible provision is for those schools that are struggling the most, those schools that have the most free and reduced kids, and those are the schools that are going to offer all meals free to everybody regardless. And in Maine, we, obviously, we do free meals for all, so this is a really good way for us to leverage all of the federal monies that we can get, and it's so with the change in, from forty to twenty-five, we met the criteria, and we went, we got in there, so all of our schools are now CEP-eligible. This frees us up greatly on the administrative side. We are not collecting free and reduced-price forms for the next four years plus. That's great for us. I know it's created a little bit of headache and maybe determining eligibility for some other programs, but we use now the direct certification list only as determination of our qualifications for CEP, and that list, you know, those are the folks that are on SNAP, TANF. Maine Care was added last year, which did increase our number of students that were on the direct cert list, also helping us to hit that threshold of the twenty-five percent. So all schools in Sanford are now CEP-eligible. I'll talk a little bit about how that may change in the future, if anything changes at the federal level, because this change from forty percent to twenty-five percent was made at the end of the last administration, and there are chances that they could change that threshold back or even make it even higher and harder to participate in CEP. So that leads me to this, the Legislative Action Conference. I've been invited by the Maine Child Nutrition Association to be part of the Legislative Action Conference. It's been approved by Matt and Cheryl, and with that, I will be heading to DC in March with a bunch of other school nutrition professionals. We'll be meeting beforehand. We will be getting together multiple times to come up with what our proposition paper will be. I can tell you that I am very focused on the community-eligible piece of things and making sure that that threshold does not change back to forty percent or even higher, which would have detrimental effects on our ability to qualify for CEP. If we don't qualify for CEP, we go back to the old days of collecting forms. We go back to doing that every single year, and that would really be a bummer, and it would really affect our bottom line, because one thing I failed to mention with CEP is with that, you take the free and reduced students and you combine them, so we no longer have that qualification of reduced, which would reimburse at a slightly lower, quite a bit lower rate than the free, so everybody is now free or paid, which increases our reimbursement significantly. I can say, for example, we have higher participation this year over last, when looking at September and October, but really what is most telling to me beyond the increase in participation, and we'll do like, you know, at the high school in October, we saw, you know, let's talk about breakfast. We did like fifty-eight hundred breakfasts in October of twenty-twenty-three, and in October of twenty-twenty-four, we're up to seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-six breakfasts. So we've done some things to increase that, but with that increased participation is increased reimbursement, because now we're only reimbursing at the free rate rather than the reduced rate. And so I'll just quickly talk a little bit about some of the challenges and improvements we have seen over the last couple of years. Staffing is and continues to be one of my biggest challenges. The attendance of my staff is a struggle. We're doing things to try to incentivize that, but I think at the end of the day, it just comes down to hiring the right people. So anybody who has anyone that works and wants to work in food service, any good, reliable folks, you know, please send in my way. We're relatively full staff, but it's about keeping good staff, retaining those good staff. So we have been hiring a lot of folks and kind of just checking them out, trying them out before we really commit. That's been working, hiring them as substitutes, kind of stozing them, as we would say in the restaurant business, to test them out to see if it's even for them, because we have some folks that just look great on paper, and they look great in an interview, but they just find that this isn't really the world. The pace isn't for them. They don't like working with kids, whatever it is. So we have, you know, we've lost some folks out of that eight hiring class. We're down to about four of those original, four of the people I hired are still with us, so we are always hiring. We're always looking for good people, but that's always one of the challenges. I'm always looking for strategies to find the right people, find people that fit, and right now, the strategy has been to kind of just do test runs with folks. One of our other big challenges is storage space, and namely, the USDA freezer space. We talked about the spend-down earlier. Here, we are at a point where we have too much money, and we've talked about what we're going to spend that on, and the big ticket item will be a USDA freezer space. We're just waiting on approval from the city to go ahead with that, and that will be a big chunk of what our spend-down letter will entail. The spend-down letter will be coming out next week, and it will be very similar to last year's spend-down letter, because we just haven't had a chance to spend that money the way we said that we would. Couple other challenges that are coming up. I mentioned the community-eligible provision. Anything that could happen to change that would be a big challenge to us. We under a bunch of new restrictions from the USDA that came out before this administration came in. One of the big ones is the Buy American provision. A lot of my fellow directors are really struggling with that. We're required to buy only all Buy American other than ten percent of our products, so it's been a real struggle to find things like juice that are only made in America, and we're working with vendors to really try to figure out ways to make it, so we're getting ninety percent of our product is all Buy American. I applaud this effort. I just think maybe it's been a little bit challenging for directors to really make this happen this quickly. It goes from ninety percent to like ninety-three percent to even more as the years progress. With that, there's also restrictions on sugar and sodium coming. I welcome those changes as well, especially for the sugar requirements, and we've been very lucky that our food vendors have worked with us, the big-name companies, you know, like the General Mills, have reformulated their cereals to fit within these restrictions, so we're really happy with that, and it has been a challenge, but we do welcome these changes. So with that, I'd like to just once again thank all my school nutrition staff, anyone who's watching, for all the hard work they do every day. I tell them that, you know, we aren't providing a product, we're providing a service. These kids need us every day, and we really are that lifeline to some of these kids and a connection to a lot of these kids, so I'd like to just make sure everyone who's sitting here knows how important it is to just give a well-done to your school nutrition staff. Remember when you see them, when school lunch hero week, school nutrition, school lunch hero week comes, please, by all means, do something nice for your school nutrition staff, because yeah, they really do work hard, and I just think it's really important to acknowledge them and the service they provide. And I'll take your questions.
I don't think anybody has any questions, but we just think you're rocking it, so thank you so much. That was so much awesome information, and they really do rock, so thank you.
Well, thank you guys very much.
Yes, thank you so much.
David, nice job.
All right, moving on to new business. We are going to have a presentation of FAP, Responsibilities for Three to Five-Year-Old, Transitioning from Child Development Services, CDS, to the Sanford School Department. Hello, Mr. B. and Tammy Delaney.
Good afternoon. Good evening, everybody. We're here this evening. This is Tammy Delaney, our Special Education Assistant Director. We're here tonight to talk to you about our journey in regards to assuming responsibility for FAP for children ages three to five. FAP is a free, appropriate, and public education that currently we're responsible for for students ages five to twenty-one. And the Maine Department of Education has, the legislature has passed a law that says that school departments need to take on that responsibility beginning July first, twenty-twenty-eight. And so tonight, we're going to talk to you about our journey, and we're going to have some recommendations for you at the end, and we're going to ask you to vote on our recommendation as we get closer to that. So to start, we do have a Special Education Advisory Committee that's been in place now for about two years. Last spring- Last spring, beginning of last spring, we formed a subcommittee to look at the three to four-year-old transition of FAP. You can see on the screen there, we, that committee is made up of a variety of members, from administration, a couple of the school committee folks, folks from the special education world, the private contractors, variety of folks that come from a variety of different roles with that. This committee has been important in terms of providing a sounding board, a place to have conversations about, what is this going to look like? This is new for everybody in the school department, this is new. We have not had these responsibilities before. And it's new for the state of Maine. And so I think that's important to keep in mind as we go through this process, that it's new with that. So we have attended a variety of informational sessions that the Department of Education has provided for us in a variety of formats. At the Superintendent's Conference we went to in October, we attended a couple of sessions there, we've attended a couple of sessions as a full committee. We even had the representatives from the Department of Ed come and do a Q and A for us, to answer what questions we have as a department with that. We've also had an opportunity to visit other districts that are engaged in this work. We did a site visit about a month ago to SAD 35, who were engaged from the beginning in Cohort One. We talked to their director, their assistant director, had an opportunity to go and observe some classrooms, which really was a really good learning experience for us with that. Tammy and I also had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to go over to SAD 57. SAD 57 is not part of the cohort yet, but they are providing programming for four-year-olds within their district that has been successful, and they've done it for a number of years now. And they are also looking to provide programming for three-year-olds. And so that was another good opportunity to see how this, how they're approaching it in practice. Also learning from districts in some of the presentations we've had, York, I attended a presentation in York, and they shared what, you know, what's working, what are their challenges they've had with us. So those have all been very beneficial conversations. And I say beneficial conversations, and conversations that have alleviated some of my anxieties or some of my worries. I think everybody we spoke to said, it's the right thing to do, and it's, and it's working, and it's going well. We've also, I'm going to talk a little bit later about partnerships, but part of this work is not only about what's taking place in the school department, but it's really about partnerships. Partnerships with our early learning centers, partnerships with our daycare providers, partnerships with our service providers. It's all about partnerships. And so really, we have worked through the work of First Ten and through the Special Education Advisory Committee, and private conversations, really trying to strengthen those partnerships that we do have. So, we talked about that mandate, July first, 2028, that's the deadline, that's when everybody's going to do it. We have an opportunity to join what they're calling Cohort Three, beginning July first of 2026. So that's for next school year, to take on the responsibility for three and four-year-olds. That's option one. We also have the option next year, if we chose, to just take on the four-year-olds and do the three-year-olds the year after. If we wait until drawing Cohort Four in 2027, 2028, we're going to have to take on both three and four-year-olds. So there's not going to be that option to take on one or the other. And so you'll see that red highlight. Our recommendation is to move forward with bringing on services for both three and four-year-olds for next year. That's going to be our recommendation to you. So what's the benefit of bringing on this cohort next year? First of all, it's about kids, it's about services. And right now, we have kids in our school system, in our pre-K programs, that are not receiving service. That has a direct impact on students, individual students, but it also has an impact on our pre-K programs. So bringing this on, providing better service to those, to our students that receive those services, and then providing better support to our current pre-K programs with that. Third thing, funding. We have been told by the Department of Education, it's a hundred percent funding. And also, there may be some upfront funding to take care of some supplies. If we need to add a bathroom, there may be some funding available for that, that may not be available in future years. And then the other piece of it, the last part of it, is attracting talent. The longer we wait, the, the, more time that's going to pass, and other districts are going to snatch these people up. So we want to get the good people while we can get them with that. So I'm now going to turn it off to Tammy. I've talked enough, and Tammy's going to get in some of the nuts and bolts about that programming looks like.
Yeah, so there are some things that feel like they're huge changes, but when we learned more about it and met with other people, we realized there aren't as big of a change as we thought there was going to be. We're already doing most of what is going to change. And so the first thing, for example, is Child Find. So Child Find is a state and federal law that requires us to find and evaluate students with disabilities from birth to twenty, through their twenty-first year. Public school only has to do that starting at age five. So we're already doing Child Find, we're already doing that in our students, with our students in schools right now. The only thing that would change is that we would then do that process for students who are three and four years old. So the same process, just with a couple of years younger. The second thing that changes, but again, not hugely, is the eligibility process. So right now, our process is that when we have students that are attending public school, if there is a concern that there's a possible disability, we go through that referral process, we go through that eligibility process, we find a student eligible, provide services if they need it. That happens during the school year. So students who may come into the district, or parents feel that there's something there, they want some testing done during the summer, they can let us know, but that the timeline for us doesn't start until school starts. And then we work really hard throughout the school year, school year ends, and anything that wasn't finished picks back up the following school year. The change here is that for our three and four-year-olds, that would happen all year long. So we could have a student who is three years old, and there's a concern there, and we would pick up that, because of the Child Find responsibility, we would pick up the referral, we would then go through the eligibility process, even if it's July, August. And then, something else that is a little bit different, but again, service settings. So we're, right now, in, in our FAP responsibility, we are providing services for students in the school setting. What that changes is for students who are three and four years old, depending on their age, there may be services provided in their home, because we're always looking at that least restrictive setting. And for three-year-olds, the least restrictive setting is their natural setting, which is most likely in their home, it could be in their daycare, it could be in a preschool that they're already attending. So we're looking at school, home, and then community, if they're already in a setting in the community. And then finally, again, a change, but not that big of a deal, is the extended, excuse me, extended services. So extended school year services for students currently in school are for the purposes of reducing the amount of regression that occurs. So a student who's on an IEP, who experiences regression throughout the school year or during the summer, they may qualify for extended school year services. And the purpose of that is to prevent them from regressing, or regressing so much that it takes a long period of time to recoup. So we start school in September, we expect most students to have slid back a little bit, but we want to be back on track mid-September, beginning of October. When we have students who it takes a couple of months to get back, they attend extended school year, so we don't have that big of a slide. And so that would include also those students who are ages three and four. So nothing different, just an addition for those services. So when we were talking about Child Find, right now, what happens is, as I said before, that it comes from parents, it can come from a staff member in the school, doesn't have to necessarily be their teacher, could be Title I, could be principal, if there's some concerns there. But for the three and four-year-olds, there's a number of more places that referrals can come from, it could come from their pediatrician, it could come from their families, of course, it could come from their early childhood center, it could come from their, their daycare provider, it could come from a general ed pre-K teacher, if they're already in a program. That often is the case right now for our kiddos who are in pre-K, and there, there's some time that goes by, and there's some concerns, they become part of that referral process, and we just follow the process as we would. And then the Part C transition is for all of those kiddos who are in that birth to three, that is the Part C transition. So when they go from three to, or birth from three to three to five, that transition's over. So if we were to pick up them now, what would happen is a student who is, say, two years old would still remain under the Child Development Services, and as they're getting closer to three, we pick them up. If there's someone who is two and a half to two and three-quarters, if that's the math, CDS may say, we have a referral for you, and then it comes through CDS. And then, the service delivery in the least restrictive environment, so I had mentioned before, for three-year-olds, that least restrictive environment could be home. Least restrictive environment is really that environment in which the student is able to do their best learning. And so when a student qualifies for an individual education plan or an IEP, the team has to determine, what is that setting that makes the most sense for that student to be able to get what they need to get? And so we want to consider their age, and we also then want to consider their disability, and then how it impacts them. So just moving over to that third column first, that setting options. So we have some inclusive settings already, so kiddos who are in daycares, preschools, we have our students who are already attending our general ed pre-K. That may be the setting that they receive their services in. We're proposing tonight the special education settings for Sanford Special Education pre-K, potentially three classrooms for four-year-olds, and possibly a classroom for three-year-olds. And then there's also the special purpose preschools that we have students in right now. We have students that are attending special purpose preschools, and then when they turn four years old, and they're in that program, I tend to go to those programs and see how they're doing, and whether or not we have a program that can best meet their needs. And sometimes they stay in a special purpose, purpose preschool. So going back into that first column, so the three-year-olds, we're really looking at services provided in their community center or a school setting, if that's what's needed, their preschool setting. Some may push in. So again, when we're talking about what's the most appropriate placement, there are some three-year-olds that may do better in a pre-K, four-year-old program, where they have the typical student in, in being able to engage in some of those social skills, really depends on what their need is as a three-year-old. But by law, right now, it's up to six hours a week. So the IEP team would determine what those services are, what services are needed, and then how many hours that might look like, but the law says right now, only up to six hours. For four-year-olds, that can look a little bit different, and so we have, the services are still determined by the IEP team, but right now, we have pre-K classrooms that have a maximum number of sixteen students per classroom. So we also have right now, students who are on an IEP in those classrooms, because they only maybe need it for some speech, they might need it for a little bit of OT, maybe they need it for an hour or two a week of specially designed instruction. So they're very capable of being in a typical gen ed pre-K classroom. But we need to look at students who have an IEP that may need more than that. So we're sort of looking at that fifty to a hundred percent of time, if a student is able to be in a special, excuse me, in a general ed pre-K classroom, then they may get their services as a push-in model. They may come out of their classroom to receive services, but then spend their day in the general ed pre-K, and they would be one of those sixteen, that number of sixteen students that can be in that classroom. But if a student has an IEP, it's been determined by the team that they need significantly more services than what would be appropriate for a typical general ed kindergarten classroom, then they would be able to receive their services in a special education pre-K classroom that we're proposing, that we create. And then they would still be able to push into a general ed kindergarten, or excuse me, pre-K classroom for exposure, but they would not be part of that sixteen, they would push in with support. And that zero to forty-nine percent in the general ed, it's all based on, again, how a student is able to manage, and how they're able to access, and how much is too much. Let's see, we did the settings already. So right now, Sanford, I, I think that we are very fortunate to have the services that we do have, and we do provide a comprehensive, comprehensive services for our students who are on an IEP. So the first thing is that specially designed instruction, that a student has been identified as a student who needs an IEP, who needs to have specially designed instruction, they're getting that, and then sometimes, alongside specially designed instruction, they need something more. It may be speech therapy, it may be occupational therapy, physical therapy, they may, they need, excuse me, they may need special ed transportation, because they're not able to manage on the general ed bus, they may need some behavioral supports. So we provide all of that now for our students, and those would be the same things that we would be providing for our pre-K cla, pre-K classroom, excuse me.
So we talked about partnerships. So currently, we have a partnership with the YMCA for pre-K. Later on the agenda tonight, I have another proposal to develop a partnership with KidsCove for a regular pre-K classroom for sixteen students, but continuing to look for, who are our partners out there? Head Start is another partner we've been engaged with in conversation. Head Start provides programming for three and four-year-olds. That's, that's a really a potential partner for us. We've also been engaged with conversations with Waypoint. Waypoint provides special education services for some of our most significant needs children. They can be a great partner for us. So as you can see, YMCA, Head Start, Kids Cove, Waypoint, we're starting to develop those partnerships, so we have a relationships with those providers, they also have our students, they have our families. It's a win-win situation for us. So when we talk about partnerships, it's really, really important. We're going to continue to work on formalizing those partnerships as we move on. And when I say move on, Head Start, we started that conversation, we're going to come back to the table before the holidays, hopefully, to continue that conversation. So these conversations are ongoing to develop those partnerships, so we can meet the needs of our kiddos. And why is this all important? It's important because when we talk about our three-year-olds in particular, a lot of our three-year-olds are in programs. And so as we look to provide special education services for those students who are identified, their least restrictive setting sometimes is going to be within those programs. So the more we can develop these partnerships, the better in terms of keeping kids in the program. So staff, staffing, capacity, and funding, that's, those are the big questions. How are we going to do this? So who's on board and who's needed? We're going to need a program coordinator, somebody who oversees the three to four-year-old programming, that's a necessity. We're going to have, with our numbers, we're going to need somebody. We're also going to need an administrative assistant, support with the referral process, with IEPs, we're going to need administrative assistant support. Speech services, Tammy's done a great job of building that partnership with Fran Bodkins at Saco Bay, and so they are continually to work on building their capacity to deliver speech services through us. Occupational services, same thing, we contract with Jill Shack. Tammy's also been in conversation with her to build up her, her resources that she has. Physical therapy, we're going to need to hire somebody, but those numbers are a little lower. We're going to be looking, as Tammy mentioned, three classrooms, one at each one of our elementary schools. elementary schools, special education classroom, so three teachers with two ed techs in each one of those classrooms. That's our starting point for what we'll be looking for with that. Funding, we mentioned, it's 100% funded by the DOE. We have received updated numbers for what we can expect next year. We received those earlier this morning. We've also received this funding spreadsheet, so we plug in those numbers, and they tell us, this is the allocation, which you have to play with, and it's a ballpark. And so I think that will be helpful for us as we determine our ask, because the way this will work is the DOE will come down, we'll develop a budget, we say, here's what we think we need, and then they'll work with us. Our next steps, where are those classrooms going to be? In each one of our elementary schools, the DOE is scheduled to come down next Wednesday to look at those spaces, to say, yep, these spaces will work, hey, we think we need to put a bathroom here, we think we need this furniture, playgrounds, we all set, we need something different. And then they will sort of determine, what do we need from those spaces? That's really our most immediate next step. After that, we are going to be looking at building out that budget, building out that budget from staffing to supplies, to what does that all look like? So we can have that set in space, set in place. Continuing on building those partnerships we talked about, that's ongoing work. Transportation, we're already transporting some pre-K kids. We are transporting some kids for CDS out to Developing Minds. And so Ledgmere has now been engaged in transporting our four-year-olds to special purpose private schools. Our four-year-olds are already on our buses, and so, but continuing to expand out those services. The other thing about transportation is with three-year-olds, we don't provide transportation for three-year-olds. So in those situations, parents may transport, and we may reimburse them. So that's another transportation piece in there with that. With all that being said, one of the things that our hope is, we talked about providing services for kids, but it's also about early intervention. So really, looking at providing early intervention to prevent problems later on. And so that last one is pre-K staff training. Right now, we are in a model where we screen our kids for pre-K, we make referrals to CDS. Right from that screening, we make referrals. We have to change our mindset in our pre-K programs and follow what we're doing in kindergarten up through high school in terms of, if we have a concern about a kiddo, we have to try interventions sometimes before we can make that direct referral. And so really, working with our pre-K staff, and we've started that work, but really working at making sure that we're trying interventions before we're making that referrals. So there's a mindset shift that needs to happen with our pre-K staff there as well. So we've thrown a lot at you. As you can tell, there's a lot to this, there's a lot of moving pieces, and it's, I think there has been a lot of, I wouldn't say sleepless nights, I don't think we're at sleepless nights yet, but there's been a lot of tossing and turning, or waking up at 3:00, oh, what about that? With that, but I think Tim and I have both landed on, and Matt, I think, is with us, that it's going to be better than what we have.
And thank you, Steve and Tammy, excellent job. I do want to say, you're probably saying, why, why is this here for us this evening? It's an agenda item, because as you can see, there's a lot of work that's been gone into this, but we have to let the Maine Department of Education know by January 2nd if we plan to join Cohort III. And so as you look at that timeline, that's why it's an agenda item this evening. We wanted to provide the presentation, but also hopefully get the, approve the recommendation for us to join Cohort III, so that we can continue building off of the work that we've already done, because I think, as both Steve and Tammy said, it's going to help us, and it's going to be better than what we have in terms of doing that for it. So open to any questions that the school committee may have regarding the presentation and the FAP responsibilities for three- and four-year-olds?
I just had one question. You said, one classroom at each of the elementary schools, and that was 16 children in each of those classrooms?
Special education classroom would, max would be eight.
Eight, okay. And is it three- and four-year-olds, or each one would be one or the other?
We're planning on just four-year-olds right now?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question about the least restrictive setting, and you said that they can use their, you can use homes. Who decides that? That the, the team?
Yes.
The team?
Yeah.
Now, is that an expensive, more expensive intervention, or?
It's not, it's not. So the current model right now is the Child Development Services have itinerant teachers that travel to wherever the student is, and that's, right now, they have itinerant teachers that are coming into our schools. And so the only difference would be is that we would be determining where the student is, and who's going to provide those services, and where they're going versus Child Development Services.
Excellent. And then you alluded to this, too, that there's an, is it true that there's an advantage that if you can get three-year-olds into, into your, into receiving services, it's better than waiting until they're five? Right, there's a huge advantage to that. Thank you, nice job.
I would argue that's why our special education numbers are so high in this state of Maine, is because CDS has not provided the services. We've been just shorting providers in the system, so.
And also, what this transition to this model is doing, moving from CDS to the individual school departments, that's how it's done throughout the country. Okay? So this is something that has been in the works for a while now, and as you can tell, the Department of Education has used a phased approach. And I think as we looked into this initially, we understood its importance, but I think we were also concerned about our ability for our capacity in being able to do that. And that's why you've seen the deep dive and the work that we've done to be able to come back and do that. And yes, there's still some capacity concerns, no doubt, but we also feel like we're going to have the Department of Ed's resources and support behind us, and ultimately getting out, we're going to be able to make this happen.
I mean, I, having been on this sort of journey for a while, it's, I'm just glad that we are making, or hopefully, we'll be making that decision after we vote tonight to move forward. I would just, and I know that the group, the special advisory group will talk more about this, but just, you know, this is a big job for somebody, and definitely not a job that we can add on to one of our staff members and just say, hey, just start a new program on top of what you're already doing. And I know that, I had heard you in your presentation say that July 1st, so hopefully, we could hire someone well before July 1st, because that just seems like that would be complicated, to start a program, hire somebody, and do all that. So I'm just throwing that out there in the universe, I'm not sure it'll be talked about, but. All right, so anyone else?
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the Sanford School Department joining Maine Department of Education Cohort III, and assuming the FAPE responsibilities for three-to-five-year-olds from Child Development Services beginning in 2026 and 2027.
I second that.
All right, any further discussion?
On just discussion, I just want to say that I, too, have been part of this advisory committee. I applaud the efforts that have been put into this, the time, the conversations, the questioning, the concerns, the finding out, the research done. I mean, I think that this process has been well, has been well-fueled or well-oiled, and everybody does care about these three- and four-year-olds, and they all wanted to make sure that when we kicked this off, that we were ready for it, and that we were going to do it the right way. So I just, that's, that's the discussion I have, is just being part of that and seeing the workshops and how everything transformed, and the research done. I'm very confident in where we're at today.
All right, all in.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks, Tammy.
Yes, thank you so much, great presentation.
Second present, this one is a very quick presentation. So tonight, I have for you a proposal to enter an agreement for a pre-K partnership with KidsCove Early Learning Center. KidsCove Early Learning Center is located right here in Sanford. We are looking to enter into a partnership agreement with them, where they would operate a classroom for 16 pre-K students. They would follow our school schedule like we currently follow. Why this is beneficial to families is it offers an option for that wraparound care, that before school, after school, vacations, that is a need of our families. And sometimes we have families that don't enjoy our pre-K, because they need that wraparound care. And so this is, really fits that need that we have in our community. Also fits a need for our community, because sometimes families, they have an infant, they have a four-year-old, they can't manage public school and daycare, or they want one more year of not having to manage that. And so that is another reason. And also, this is a financial benefit for those kiddos. So I'll just start there. So KidsCove, I really feel confident about entering an agreement with KidsCove. They have a classroom that's already in operation. The teacher is a certified teacher, having teacher certification, they're ed tech, Level II certification ed tech. They follow the same curriculum that we are following in our public schools, they're following the pre-K for me curriculum, the same assessment system that we use. They are at the Level III standard of a childcare center. There's levels that centers have to meet in order to engage in agreements like this, and they have reached that Level III status. They've worked to get there, and they are there. And they've just been a great collaborative partner with our work through First 10. Their owner and director is at every First 10 meeting that we have. They engage in professional development, they engage in the family engagement activities that we have. Jen has a leadership role in the state, and she's been at our side for many presentations that we've done with that. So really looking at creating a classroom for our kids. Now, what, what does this entail for us? I did share over the weekend the formal MOU. The MOU clearly outlines every single thing that KidsCove is responsible for, and the school department is responsible for, and the renewal information, everything is outlined in there. That's the same type of agreement that we enter in with the YMCA. And we had, when we had an agreement with Head Start, it's a similar there. So we do have a formalized agreement that we have that is in place. What we're going to provide is, the first thing up there is transportation. We will use our existing transportation that we have, and it will not be an additional cost to us. Say, wait, Steve, there's 16 kids we're adding to our, to our transportation. It's not necessarily 16 kids, because remember I said earlier, a lot of families want that before and after care, take those kids out of the transportation equation. So it's not the full 16. And we only provide transportation if they are within that radius of KidsCove. So if somebody is in South Sanford, we're not going to be able to provide transportation with that. It's only the kids within that radius. We do provide meals, breakfast and lunch. Currently, that is an expense. That's an expense, because they're not part of the free meals program with the Department of Education. The Department of Ed has worked on those regulations, tried to get movement on that. We haven't had movement on that, so that is an expense to us. Our nurses do provide screenings, so they do division hearing, hearing screening, immunizations, we make sure we have all of that information for us. Early screening, remember we talked about early intervention? Early intervention there. Professional development, we provide opportunities for them to provide, to join us in professional development. That's no cost to us. We already have professional development, so they're welcome to join us anytime. If we take on special education services, we'll be providing special education services to them, as well as their three-year-olds, because remember, they have three-year-olds? So there's that partnership we talked about as well. Way it works, we have the MOU, they know what they can bill us for, they send us an invoice every month, and we, and we pay them. Where does this money come from? It comes from the EPS formula. We get an allocation for each one of those kiddos through the EPS formula, that's where those funds come from. We hope it would be 100%, 100%, no cost, but there is a little bit of cost. When we did the math, we based it on this year's subsidy amount, and we came up about That is an expense to the school department, be about $4,000. We think we can look at ways to shave that down a little bit, whether it be through school nutrition. Right now, we're delivering meals to individual kids. If we look to do a community meal, which is developmentally appropriate for kindergartners, for pre-K students, can we get that cost down a little bit? Does a subsidy go up when we get our EPS formula for next year? Does that subsidy go up? When you think about early intervention, the sooner we intervene, special education services later, it's a win-win for us. And I mentioned the benefits for families earlier. No cost, they have to pay for before and after care, but it's no cost during the day for them, school readiness, family support, and then extended options, which we've already talked about before. I do want to mention, moving forward, with any agreement that we enter into, at the end of every year, we look and we reevaluate. Is it working for the school department? Is it working for the, for our partner? Are the financial numbers working out? And then we agree, do we want to continue for another year? So it's not, we sign on once, and then it's, we're on forever. We've had head arrangements in the past that we were engaged in. I'm going to use Head Start as an example. At that time, when we opened our own pre-K, we said, this is not going to work out for us right now. We parted ways. Well, we're looking to come back together, but we do evaluate at the end of every year. And we will be working with YMCA. They're up for reevaluation, so we'll be meeting with them to talk about, hey, what are we doing for next year? I also meet, try to meet regularly with our providers, check in every month or so. Hey, how are things going? Any concerns you have with that? Yeah. So looking for your approval tonight to move forward, to continue to work on that contract with KidsCove. And I'll take any questions at this time.
I have a question, I think, and I don't, forgive me, I might be wrong, was it 164,000 was the overall? Or is that something else I was looking at?
About that.
Okay, okay.
Yep, you know.
And you're saying that with the EPS formula and the per pupil reimbursement, for the most part, that's where all but just about 4,000 of that is going to get covered through, okay?
Yep.
It's not an additional?
Nope, and that includes like the school meals, that's everything.
Okay, and then, and that's with like, potentially some of those three-year-olds in there, you know, that may even help?
Three-year-olds, this would be a program for four-year-olds.
Okay.
When we do, if we take on, we're going to take on the special education services for three- and four-year-olds. They have three-year-olds in other programs.
Yep.
So we'll be engaged with them with those three-year-olds for special education services for three-year-olds there. So what I'm saying is, we'll be delivering special education services as part of our program.
If they're identified, if they're identified there, we would, it would make it actually easier and more convenient for us to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But in essence, it's another pre-K classroom for us.
Yep, absolutely. Increasing our capacity, increasing our capacity, because we'd like to get to the point where you want pre-K, we'll find a spot for you.
Sure.
Yep.
All right. I will make a recommendation to approve pre-K partnership between KidsCove Early Learning Center and the Sanford School Department for the 26, 27 school year.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All of, yeah, sorry, yeah.
I just want, I was just going to ask, what does that bring us to for a number of spots available for pre-K? Sorry. After you've been able to swallow what you just put in your mouth, I'm sorry.
128.
128, did you say?
132.
No, I think we were, weren't we at 100? Weren't we, weren't we at 112, and you add 16 to that?
Be 128.
128.
Thank you.
Math after 7:00 o'clock is hard.
That was 128, everybody.
And there was like, there was one...
And there was like, there was one fifty that put into the lottery last year?
We had, good point. We had thirty students in September that were looking for a spot. Yeah.
All right. And, but they already had, these kids that are already there weren't looking for a spot necessarily because they already had it, you know, so, it's not, yeah. But, but I do like the curriculum and the partnership and.
But with that, so, some of Kids Cove's four-year-olds, some of those kiddos that have been with them from birth to, some of them decide to come into the public school. And so that opens up slots there.
Or they could just stay also, like they no longer feel like they have to move, they can just stay and be, that's even better. Yep, cool.
All right, are we ready to vote? Perfect. All in favor? Wonderful, perfect. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to the exciting October 2025 financials by the one and the only Sherifornia.
Hello, how are you? Look at that, she's already got them up. So, October financials. So, this month, you see, we are not over budget. So, we are right now nine hundred and eight thousand dollars under budget for the current month, and running about six hundred and seven thousand dollars above last year. Our revenue is running about eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars above last year, mostly due to EPS. And we're running, you can see we've collected, or we have tax revenue for thirty-three point three percent of our year. Federal grants, we've taken in five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars worth of revenue and five hundred and three thousand dollars worth of expense. Most of that is Title I. And then Enterprise Fund, we have four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars worth of revenue and seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars worth of expense. Most of that is nutrition, waiting for our federal funding on that. And so, that was delayed due to the federal government shutdown. And I did not write down how much we had for other grants. I guess I skipped over that. But you can see, we have way more revenue than expenses and mostly due to MLTI because we haven't paid for the MLTI computers yet in the month of October. So, we'll go to the next one. Article one, we are a hundred and forty thousand dollars below budget compared to, and about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars above last year. Running about point seven percent below budget, so it's a very small amount. The number seems big, but it's really a very small number in, compared to a twenty million dollar budget. So, I just wanted to point that out, that that number really isn't a huge dollar amount. I mean, it's a large dollar amount, but it's really not a huge amount, so. Article two, we're running about forty-six thousand dollars below budget, and that's mostly because we have a position open, a couple of positions open. And so, we're at point three percent below budget. So, that's also running, because that's a fourteen million dollar budget also. So, I wanted to point those out because it seems like those numbers are big, but they're really not in comparison to the percentage. So, I just wanted to point that out. Career and Technical Center, we're running about thirty-seven thousand dollars below budget. That one kind of fluctuates a little bit due to when they buy a lot of their cap, capital and supplies. So, that, a lot of the building supplies, I've seen some of the purchases of that happening and stuff like that. So, you'll see that fluctuates depending on when they need to buy goods. Article four, we're running about twenty-six thousand dollars below budget, and we're running similar to last year, right about four thousand dollars difference from last year. So, as you can see, we're running true to form from last year, so I have no concerns there. Article five, we're running right about thirty-four thousand dollars below budget, and that one kind of fluctuates too from year to year because it depends on if we're buying actual supplies versus programs. So, that one can fluctuate from one year to the next. But I did want to point out that we're about point eight percent below budget. So, that's really, that's a fairly large budget also, because that's four point one million dollar budget. Article six, which is system administration, we're running about twenty-five hundred dollars above budget. So, it's a very small amount, and that's a one point one million dollar budget. So, I'm not really concerned that we're just running slightly above budget. Article seven, we're running about forty-three thousand dollars below budget, and we're running just about the same amount as we were last year at this time. So, I'm not any concern of that, so we're doing good there. Transportation, we're running right at budget, we're four thousand dollars off. I have to say that this one, I keep a close eye on, and invoices are being a lot more consistently received, which is nice to see, so that's good. So, that makes a difference than prior years. So, there must have a change in staffing over there in their billing department, which has been nice because we've been very consistent. Article nine, we're running about sixty-five thousand dollars below budget, and that one also is kind of one of those ones that can fluctuate depending on what they purchase, when they purchase it. Because it's a, that's a fairly large budget also, because it's all of our facilities and maintenance department. And so, that's a six point five million dollar budget. So, sixty-five thousand is a very small amount compared to, could be just the timing of one item. Debt service, that is running right at budget. It has a slight variation just because of how our, we do our percentages, but we're running right at budget because that one comes out to the penny at the end of the year because that's a ten point five million dollar budget. And so, as you can see, we've made all our principal payments this year, and so, we're writing true to form on what our budget would be. We only have interest payments due the second half of interest payments at the end of the year. So, that's where, where that's at. Article eleven, which is the Performing Arts Center and WSSR, and we're running right about seven thousand dollars under budget right now. And that was last year, we had done a purchase of some equipment right at the beginning of the year, which we didn't do this year. So, that's why there's a difference in what we purchased this year versus last year. Adult education, we're running about twenty-eight hundred dollars above budget. That's just a difference in timing. I'm not really concerned there because there's nothing I can say that is anything that is any concern for that department. Any questions?
It does not look like so. All right, who would like to make a recommendation?
I'll make a motion to approve the October 2025 financials as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, there is no old business. We will move on to resignations and retirements.
Yep, three to announce. Todd Hildebrand as varsity football coach, Tyler Swinnon as kitchen personnel at Sanford Middle School, and Austin Swinnon as second shift custodian at the middle school. Three appointments to announce, Morgan Nickerson, EdTech 3 self-contained, Carl J. Lamb, James McDonald, second shift custodian at the middle school, and John Kuchar, hourly part-time bus driver for SRTC. We do have scheduled BC and D appointments. In terms of, it looks like a number of appointments for mentors. We have Erin Weiss, assistant high school wrestling coach, Lee Rowe as varsity indoor track assistant coach, Darlene Breton as Perkins grant manager. And I think we've got some, the appointments are mixed up there. Anne Lantain and Gary Artgard are going to be the mentors for Josh Andrews. Charlene Shea will be the mentor for Sierra Goodwin and Sandra Hewitt. Kathleen Turgent will be the mentor for Emily Prevenceur. Allison Bennett, mentor for Ashley Richardson. Stephanie Buzzino, mentor for Nate Smith. Ann Hall is a mentor for Lynn Greenwood. Anthony Bedetti is a mentor for Katrina Covey. Beth Courier is a mentor for Hannah Grant. Amy Lee Graham, mentor for Shawna Drewin. Andrea Winograd is a mentor for Kristen Montesano. And Michelle Pear is replacing Erin Gofo as a mentor for Sam Creach. A lot of those mentors are for the apprenticeship program that we mentioned at our last school committee meeting when we gave an update. And that, so that means Josh Andrews is going to be the mentor for Anne Lantain and Gary Artgard, who are working from that, for that. And then, three, some transfers to announce. Hope Sharon from a substitute EdTech 1 at Carl J. Lamb. Carrie Brinalt from substitute to EdTech 1 and the self-contained behavioral classroom at Sanford Pride. Charles Christie from kitchen personnel sub to a full-time five hours a day personnel at the middle school. And Missy Lather from EdTech 1, self-contained at Pride to an EdTech 2 self-contained.
Okay, moving on to policies and procedures. Hello, Mr. B.
Okay, good evening again. The first policy I have for you tonight is policy IKF, which is graduation requirements. The school committee voted to move to a four-block schedule at our last meeting. And so, part of moving to a four-block schedule, we have to reevaluate what we have for graduation requirements. This is for you tonight as a first read. We need to get this as a first read so we can get this policy approved in time for the program of studies. And so, we're looking to decrease the number of credits we have from twenty to seven to twenty-five. The credits below here is just a draft. We have a couple of questions that we need to have discussions in regards. The first one is, are we going to offer all-year ELA? If we're going to have all-year ELA for freshmen, then it would be, we're probably going to leave it at five credits. And then, do we want to offer math for full year for freshmen as well? And if we did that, we'd also want to leave our math credit at four. So, those conversations, we need to have those conversations. We need to figure out what we have for staffing to make sure we can work before we approve the credit requirements. But just here tonight, to let the folks know, we need to engage in this conversation before we move forward, and we'll have a recommendation for you at our January meeting. I'll set that. The next policy is EBCF Automated External Defibrillators, AEDs. Policy EBCF adds language that implements Maine's 2015 law requiring schools to offer CPR and AED training to students, and may require training for school personnel who have been identified by their superintendent in consultation with a school physician as needing such training to effectively carry out their job responsibilities. Policy EC, Building and Grounds Management. This policy's been updated, and it just changes the position title for the Director of Facilities and Maintenance. Policy ECD, any energy conservation in schools. This policy is going to replace our current policy and requires the school department to conserve energy through measures like energy audits, equipment maintenance, while also teaching students about energy use and environmental conservation through age-appropriate curriculum activities. These are things we're already doing. It just puts them into policy. Procedure ECA-R, which is Buildings and Grounds Key Control System. And this procedure has been updated to include guidelines around key card access. We now have key cards in our buildings, and so that policy now indicates that. And my recommendation is to accept the first reading of these policies and procedures. Procedure.
I will make a motion to accept the first reading of policy IKF, EBCF, EC, ECD, and procedure ECA-R.
I second that.
Any discussion? I think the only thing I will add for discussion would be regarding the IKF graduation requirements, and I know that we'll wait for the recommendation. And I just would be curious, between now and then, when we had the Bard Grant, not the current one, but the prior one, what the graduation requirements were then, because that was a four-block schedule then. So, I was just curious what we did then compared to what we do now, compared to what the recommendations is, and if there's a change, why? So, that's all I have to say. All in favor? Perfect, okay. Thank you so much. All right.
Then the following ones would be presented for a second reading. Policy EBCB, Emergency Evacuation Drills. Only change to that policy is expanding it to now include pre-K. Policy EBCC, Bomb Threats. Language change from a PET, People Evaluation Team, which has now been changed to IEP, which is an Aid of Educational Education Plan, which is with state law. Emergency Closing, EBCE. This is a policy in regards to school closings, which we'll have some practice in maybe tomorrow. Policy K, Student Memorials. This policy's been updated to talk about athletics and how do we handle when a student or coach passes away in athletics. And the last policy's EBBD, Temperature Standards for School. The Maine Legislature passed a law in 2025 requiring schools to address classroom temperatures that were too hot for effective teaching and learning. This law actually took place in September 24th, 2024. The new policy establishes temperature standards in schools. This policy has been updated since the first reading. The updated policy since the first reading defines what qualifies as extreme temperatures, events, and it requires the superintendent to ensure schools take appropriate cautions, and it adds the language during National Weather Service advisories for heat, excessive heat, wind chill, or extreme cold. And so, some more terminology or clarity on what extreme means there. And my recommendation is to accept those policies for a second reading.
I make a motion to accept the second reading of policy EBCB, EBCC, EBCE, K, and EBBD.
I second that.
Just discussion, just to one point. Can we put that back up, Sarah? Sorry. I just feel like it's important to read the full policy of K. I just, I feel like that needs to be fully read.
Policy K, Student Memorials, has been updated to include guidance for when a student, athlete, coach, or individual with a significant connection to an athletic team passes away. The school may observe a moment of silence before one game during the current season, coordinated by the athletic director in consultation with the family. To maintain uniformity in school athletics, no permanent alterations to school uniforms are permitted, and that any fundraising request benefiting a nonprofit organization chosen with a family input is subject to athletic director approval and school fundraising procedures.
Okay, thank you. It doesn't define what is extreme, though. Meaning it doesn't put it like a hundred and five degree or anything like that. And I think there was discussion around that at the state level. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve.
Extreme, the union, this came from the school, the teachers' union. When they looked at extreme, it just said extreme, and it didn't have any, when extreme things happen, we have to make, take action. And so, in the policy, the updated policy, the extreme is when the National Weather Service issues, that's the definition of extreme, when the National Weather Service issues a heat advisory, or a wind chill advisory, or extreme cold advisory, that's the definition of extreme. And so, but there's not a temperature attached to it. There's rather a National Weather Service designation is the definition of extreme that we've added to the policy to put some more clarity in there for folks. put some more clarity in there for folks.
Okay. Are we ready to vote, or any more discussion? No? Okay. All in favor? Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. So moving forward, items for future agendas. The one thing that just came to me, when we were talking about policies, was something that Paul, you brought up about the last meeting about policies and discipline, and that we want to look at those policies. And I feel like Mr. Nelson brought up, do we want to have a workshop with the administrators? And I don't know if that's something we want, knowing that we have budget season coming ahead in January, whether we want to wait till after the holidays in January to do it. Because I think we're going to start our budget process either the last week of January or the first week of February. So are we trying to, what are your thoughts, I guess, on doing a workshop around discipline with the administrators in January? Are we trying to look before the holidays? I'm looking to all of you to see your thoughts.
I think January's...
Fine.
Appropriate, yeah.
What do you think?
Yeah, we had discussed at the policy committee meeting, talking about this, and I think the first step was, I'm going to talk to administrators at our 18 meeting with the idea, with the idea that that's going to come back into, probably be followed up by a workshop with that. And I think probably, if you look at that timeline, probably we might be able to get it in here before Christmas, or in the beginning of the new year in January.
Yeah. So I think what we just said, January is fine as well. Just given what we were already looking at our calendars and trying to squeeze in some other things, that that might be more realistic. Is there anything else from anyone for future calendar items? No? Okay. Moving on to calendar announcements.
Sure. So we've got some, this week, this Wednesday, Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation Monthly Meeting is this Wednesday at 4:00, down at the High School and Technical Center. The holiday concerts, winter concerts are starting. Seventh and eighth grade will take place on Wednesday, December 10. The high school band and chorus concert will take place on December 11. The next SRTC Advisory Committee meeting is on Friday, December 12. Our next policy committee meeting is on Monday, December 15. That's also the night of the fifth and sixth grade winter middle school conference at the Performing Arts Center. Looking to have a school committee executive session for superintendent's evaluation on Thursday, December 18, beginning at 8:00 a.m. And then we will have the winter break, which will begin on December 24, go all the way through January 2, with both Christmas on Thursday, the 25th, and New Year's Day on Thursday, the 1st of January. And our next school committee regular business meeting will be on Monday, January 5.
All right. I will make a recommendation to adjourn this meeting at 7:55.
I second that.
Perfect. All in favor? Wonderful. All right. Thank you, everybody, for watching.